It being after seven o'clock already. All right, are you ready? Okay. It is June 7th, 2011. I call this a regular Board of Trustees.
It's not June 7th, July 11th.
I'm reading the June minutes. I got them right in front of me. And that's, I apologize for that. Let me start over again. It's Tuesday, July the 5th. Let the record show that we called this meeting to order at 7:04 PM. And I would ask the clerk to please take the roll.
President Stein?
Yeah.
Kristi O'Brien Bergman?
Here.
Ortner?
Here.
Stanford?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Leckin?
Here.
Here.
The aforementioned minutes are in front of me, and I'm sure they're in front of my colleagues on the board. And I would ask someone to make a motion to approve the minutes of June 7th. We'll do these one at a time. And there are two sets of minutes, June 7th and June 16th. And then we can discuss any suggested changes.
Move approval of the minutes from our meeting held on 7 June 2011 as drafted.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion, any other points on these minutes that need clarification, correction, et cetera? If not, all in favor of accepting the minutes as submitted indicate by saying aye.
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 Oppose same sign. We had a special meeting on June 16th. I entertain a motion to accept those meeting minutes.
Move to approve the meeting minutes from the special board meeting for Thursday, June 16th, 2011.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for discussion here?
Just one correction. I talked to Becky. Up in the, they had her, the June 16th meeting was held at 1810 AM, 16.
Yeah.
Read once and well.
It's funny how we read the minutes and we don't look at the top. Just, thank you, Stan. Great catch. Okay. All in favor of accepting these minutes with that edit, that correction, indicate by saying aye.
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 Oppose same sign. This is the opportunity in the meeting when we have comments from the floor for residents to make the board aware of issues, et cetera. There are no members of the community out in the audience, except for Doug. Doug, do you have anything?
I remember.
I said, except for Doug.
I think you say it.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on. Item number four, new business from the board or staff. And I would like to take my time. It says, A, President's comments. I don't have any. So I'll use my time to ask if any of the board members have anything that they would like to share with the rest of the community. The silence is deafening, so I turn to Gloria, our administrator. And you have a couple items on here.
Yes, part of the budgeting process this year, the board has requested that we do RFP for the majority of our services. And, and one of those RFPs includes assessor services. So you'll see in your packet, the posting that went to the paper for the request for proposals, and then the actual proposal that is actually also on our website. We're, we have a couple of issues that are coming up. One is that the state is requiring us to be electronic, have electronic data transmission by January 1, 2014. We may need to do a reval in order to obtain the, all the required information to put into that system. We, it would also require us to buy a computer program. At this point, we're not sure which program we would need depending on whether we have the assessment done or not, and who the assessor would be. Did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
We just might want to, in your packet, you'll notice that there's a document here from Assessment Technologies of Wisconsin. And this was, well, let's put a little bit of this in perspective. Our assessor, Peter Post, had indicated to us that this was coming. Shortly thereafter, I received this document. And you'll notice that it's printed on both sides. It tells you about what's called the Market Drive, which is the software that we're looking at, or that they would like to sell us that is compatible with what the state is requiring. And Peter had told us that this was coming. When it finally did come, I then wrote to, as you can see, last June 27th, mailed a letter to Senator Sheila Harzendorf, and indicating what our dilemma is. Required, we are going to be required to do this. There's no question about that. And we do recognize the need for this. And we are supportive of that. However is, it's going to cost us, if we have to go through a reassessment, it's going to cost us an estimated $60,000, which we quite frankly don't have. You'll notice at the bottom of the letter that I wrote to her, I've tried to capture some of the suggestions or some of the thoughts, the alternatives that we have. And number, as you'll see, I've indicated in here too that us doing this ourselves is probably out of the question. So I, number three is I appeal to you to allow us to gradually transfer the data and extend the deadline so that we can accommodate the requirement in a less onerous fashion. My last comment to her, and I share it with you. I do hope that you and Dean will support AJR 46, constitutional provision prohibiting unfunded mandates, which is exactly what this is. It is, in my opinion, onerous to expect the municipality the size of us to all of a sudden have to find $60,000 for, to satisfy a mandate. We'll see where this goes.
Mr. President, I'd also like to point out that it's appropriate that from time to time we review our vendor services.
Yes, it is.
In fact, what we're doing with an RFP, and the RFP should not be interpreted as, as being dissatisfaction with our current vendor, Mr. Post, who is providing our assessor services.
That is, that is very true.
That is correct. I did personally call Peter and told him that we would be going out.
Right.
And letting him know that our auditor also heard the same thing. And it's really about due diligence and budgeting.
Peter.
Should be doing this. I just want the public to understand that we are not doing this because of dissatisfaction.
Thank you. That kind of takes.
That kind of takes care of both.
Takes care of both your one and two.
Yeah.
Okay, did you have anything else?
No, thank you.
Becky, village clerk. I understand you have a couple things that you'd like to share with the public.
Just a couple of brief things. On next Tuesday, July 12th, is the primary for the recall election. Polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And there's still an opportunity to vote by absentee.
You can do that here at the village hall until 5:00 PM on Friday, this Friday, which would be the 8th, July 8th, at 5:00 PM. So you will be asked to bring proof of, or you will be asked to show your proof of residence. However, it is not mandatory at this time that you would be able to vote without your photo ID. But we're working up to the February of 2012 election when it will be mandatory. So plan to bring that with you when you come. And then the second thing is just regarding the board of review process. We had a meeting back in, in May, or actually, it was the first part of June. And we've been kind of trying to nail down the dates as to when the assessment role will be available. And we're kind of still working on that. But it appears at this point that the role will be available for informal viewing by July 14th. And the open book at this point is scheduled for Thursday, July 28th, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. And the board of review would be on Monday, August 15th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. The notification will be sent to the paper this Friday, so we're hoping to have it confirmed at that time. But I just wanted to bring it up because we did indicate that the dates would be different than these initially. So those are a date, date changes. And that's all I have.
Now, number three.
Nope, just two.
Item number five on your agenda, temporary Class B alcohol license for the Pepperfest. Pepperfest is coming up, August 19th to 21st.
Move to approve. Sorry, I want the suggested motion written.
Would you please read that? Yes.
Yes, I do. Move to approve the temporary class permitted malt beverage in Class B and tax exempt liquor license with an effective date of August 18th through August 22nd, 2011, as recommended by the board.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Motion carries. Number six, we have a resolution. And who wants to handle this one? You want to?
We can.
Rebecca?
Both of us together.
Okay.
I'm sure that Darryl is probably very familiar with what this is about. They, at the county level, they changed our, they, well, they changed the supervisory districts. And part of that process, because of the census, is to go to the local municipalities and give us an opportunity to also adjust our ward lines. Becky and I went to some training up at the county, and then we brought our information back and devised a ward map that we think fairly, as fairly as possible with the, the block system that the state requires, divides up the population as best we could evenly. North Hudson's a little unique because you'll see there's one block that has 550 people in it. And so it makes it very difficult to find or to divide these up equally. We did leave one area, the Ward Number Four, has a few less, or not really a few less, but right at the bottom of the 600 range, because we do have that development of Derek's that is still in, in process. And I think there's, the Zappa's property also could be developed in the future, which would change these. But who knows, in 10 years, we'll have another census and be able to do this all over again. Becky, did you have any points on this that you wanted to, to go through? I know that you prepared this resolution.
Not really. The resolution, it was kind of provided by the county, so it's, it's fairly standard. It indicates each ward and the population of each ward. And also provides for the combining of all those wards into one polling place, which is listed as the, the last, be it further resolved on the, on the bottom of the first page there. I would ask that before everybody leaves tonight, we are required to have each of the members of the board sign indicating, on the back of the resolution, indicating how they vote on this. And a certified copy will be forwarded to the county clerk within five days of this meeting. So make sure we get that, that signature taken care of before we leave tonight.
You have the copy that will be signed.
Yes, I do.
Now, what I find interesting about that, there are six lines. I am asked to sign as the president, but it doesn't ask me how I voted.
Well, there's, yeah.
Probably should sign twice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because the village president has all the powers of a regular trustee.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. That's a good point.
Just add your name under one of those.
Yep. What I do, but I just thought of this.
Well, and if, yeah, I guess if you were to, yeah, that'll, that'll be fine.
Okay.
You are, like, if we were voting wards, you would be at large, and everyone else would be designated by ward.
Colleen, for the first time in all the years that we've lived on Helen Street, you and I will now be in the same ward.
Oh, that's right.
All right. Do we need someone to read the entire resolution?
I'm afraid to move the resolution. I, I don't think it's necessary to read the whole resolution.
I don't think so either. Yeah.
Mr. President, I move approval of Resolution Number 2011-09, which is a resolution, excuse me, a resolution adopting the ward plan for the village in North Hudson.
Very good. Thank you.
Second.
Thanks, Dan. Any further discussion? I would like to have a roll call vote for this. Dan, would you like to start?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Becky, at your convenience, if you want to pass that around, I'm sure we'll all sign it. We have another resolution in the DNR. This is an annual thing. It's the Compliance Maintenance Report. And I don't see, oh. Someone from Public Works like to, I think this, this comes.
Actually.
Doesn't Mark?
He does, but I do part of it, too.
Oh, if you want to talk about it. I see your name right at the top, so.
Sure.
All right.
Mark completed his side as far as the, the compliance. And then I handled the financial side of it. And this is an annual report that's done every, of course, every year. And they just want to make sure that we're keeping our financial position so that if there's any maintenance that is being done, the check on the, the systems to make sure that they're in good working order.
Want to talk about the GPA? I love that term.
Well, the 4.0.
The term, yeah, we got a 4.0, which I'd translate to a letter grade of A just as the DNR does. So we have graded ourselves on this, right? It's interesting, every year we.
Well, we grade ourselves by our answers. If we don't have the appropriate answers, we would get a lower grade.
Right, right. Okay, any questions? We need, let's get somebody to read the resolution. It's short.
I would move to adopt Resolution Number 2011-10, Resolution Reviewing the Compliance Maintenance Report. Would you like me to read it, or is that good enough?
No, I'd say, I think that's fine.
It's perfect.
All right.
So this report is going to wind up going to the DNR.
We need a second. We need a second first.
A second.
Thank you. Go ahead.
My question is, maybe it's, maybe it's more of a statement. We're going to send this report to the DNR and hope that somebody reads it?
I wasn't even thinking of hoping someone would read it.
I tell you what, when it's late, they're on you like a duck on a June bug, so. Somebody's looking at it.
It's like a what?
No.
There are so many of these bureaucratic things that we wind up doing.
Yeah.
And you just assume that it's important and somebody's reading it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Duly noted. Anybody else? This is a resolution, so Stan, you want to start us off?
Aye.
Aye, yes.
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 Dan, anything you want to say regarding Plan Commission?
Unfortunately, I was not at the Plan Commission meeting that was held on June 16th.
That's the only one that we had, right?
Yes.
I, I thought that Mike Kaiser was going to be here tonight, but I can give you just a, a brief review of what the Plan Commission considered at their meeting. First item was the conditional use permit of LT's Automotive that has since gone and been approved by the village board. So I believe that they are up in, actually in business. Second item was starting the process of reviewing the fees in the Parkland ordinance with the assistance of Kevin Oyam and Patrick Beaufort from Cedar Corporation. The Plan Commission looked at some examples and some various methods of, of calculating fees and Parkland dedication. And will be continuing to work on that at their meeting in July. Kevin, do you have anything you wanted to add to that? Okay. And then the other item was the annual comprehensive plan review. Also, with the help of Cedar Corporation, we kind of reviewed the implementation schedules of the comprehensive plan. Kind of went through each of the items and the short and midterm goals, especially kind of focused on those items and the continuing goals. And were able to kind of determine that, that the village has done a pretty good job of addressing a lot of the, of the goals that were listed on there and will be continuing to do that in the future. It was also suggested that being that the comprehensive plan should be going and undergoing a major review every 10 years, that the Plan Commission kind of start to do a little bit more work on preparing for that major review and also getting other groups like the plant, or excuse me, like the park board to kind of take a look at some of the sections that affect the parks and things like that in preparation for the, for the major review that will be done at the 10-year point. And that is it.
Thank you, Becky. Item number nine is the, the work of the Personnel and Finance Committee that met from 6:00 to 7:00 this evening. And as you see, the first thing on, first on the, that agenda was claims, excuse me, the claims. In other words, paying our bills. I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve the June 2011 non-recurring claims totaling $27,862.79.
I will second that.
Thank you. Any discussion, any questions? Okay, it's a spending, so we will do a roll call. Back to you, Dan.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Item B is Resolution 2011-11, approving refinancing of village's long-term debt. And the Finance Committee did make a couple of motions, recommendations to the board. And if you take a look at your suggested motion, you'll notice that there are two motions there, separated by an or. What we recognized was the need to change the or to an and. So what we have here actually is two motions. And I will ask Gloria to discuss what this is all about. All right, you want to take over?
The project, the St. Croix Station Roads Resurfacing Project is being in process right now. And we went out for bid to, for a loan for $124,690. And there were three banks that responded with, two of them with five-year bids and one with a 5 and a 10. I also checked with the Board of Commissioners of Public Land to see what they had available. And they had a nice rate of 3.75 for 10 years. The only difference is we usually have an installment of twice a year. And this one, by, it's not allowed for them to do twice a year. They have to do it in March of, every year. The other option, or an additionally consideration, would be to refinance our current loans to see what kind of savings we would get if we combined them all at the 3.75, which would make about a $17,000 savings over the 10 years. And the great part about finances recommending that we accept the, the Board of Commissioners of Public Land bid. The great part about that is that all the interest that we pay on those loans will go back to the community in the form of the school libraries. So the, the money goes back to the school for supplies for their library.
Is there someone who would like to read the first suggested motion?
I would be happy to.
Thank you, Jim.
I move to finance the St. Croix County, St. Croix Station Road Resurfacing Project in an amount of $124,690 with the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands with an interest rate of 3.75% for a period of 10 years, with one installment per year beginning in March of 2012, and no prepayment penalties.
I'll second that. And then I have a comment. And again, as we discussed in finance, if you look at our agenda, we're on B. And if we do this, it already assumes that we've done C. I, I still submit they're out of order. We should be approving the bank loan bid prior to moving the motion. But I'm just making that as procedural observation.
Just going by what we did in finance.
Right. I'm just making the same point.
Okay. Do we need to change anything?
No.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion?
Is there any reason we won't do the whole debt?
It's, it's coming. It's, it's really two motions. Yeah. Right now, we've got one, which is the loan request that we went out and we received the proposals. And that is item C, the bank loan bid selection approval requested. This assumes we've approved that one, and we are now going to finance the St. Croix Station project. Then you'll notice the and. Then we're going to move to the second motion, which combines.
My says or, that's why I said.
That's why.
He, he just corrected that.
My bad. Make it an and.
All right. We made this comment at Finance, and I want to reiterate it for the public. We, we applaud Gloria for all the legwork that she put into coming up with this document and the attachments. Couldn't have done it without you, kid. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right. Stan, you want to start us off with the, with the motion, with the ayes or the nays?
Aye.
Yes.
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 We're now ready for the second part.
Mr. President, I would move to refinance a portion of the existing debt by combining it with the previous motion to refinance the, for the resurfacing project in a total now amount of $620,001,000 with the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands with an interest rate of 3.75% interest rate of 3.75% for a period of 10 years, with one installment per year beginning in March of 2012, and with no prepayment penalties.
Second.
Now then, this is where we answer that question. It's a combining now of all our outstanding debt, which will save us over $17,000 over the life of the loan. When we're at the end of Finance, each month, we're looking at-
Well, it's not all of it, yeah.
Projects.
Projects, right.
We're looking for where can we save money? And as Gloria pointed out, she said, "You just did. You just saved $17,000 over a period of 10 years." And maybe to a big city, $17,000 is not that much, but to our village, it sure is. Very good. Any other comments or questions? Dan, you want to start us off with yes or no?
Yes.
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 Very good. The next topic on the agenda here, Item D, Cooperative Fuel Purchasing Program Discussion Only, we're not going to vote on this at this time because it's not on the agenda. However, some interesting numbers here, right Gloria?
Yeah. Well, yeah, I guess just the quick background is that Dan had given us a challenge to see if we would be interested in cooperating with the city and doing a combined fuel purchase. And the spreadsheet attached is what we, basically what we've looked at.
At the dedication of the Freedom Station, I talked to one of their executives, a gentleman by name of Rick, and I said to Rick, "You know, we're doing RFPs for our fuel purchases, and I wonder if you would be interesting, interested in talking with Gloria regarding your best price for us to be able to purchase our fuel from you." And Gloria was subsequent to that conversation. Did he contact, did he contact you, or did you contact him?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I noticed.
I'm sorry.
No, it wasn't your fault.
Would you please repeat that?
Was it you, or did you contact Rick, or did he contact you? What was the-
I contacted him after speaking with you, and he sent me, got me in touch with Kelly, who was able to speak with Mike. I'm not sure what Mike's position is there, but he was able to authorize 5 cent per gallon, starting with this statement, discount on all our fuel purchases. Did you go through the-
I didn't go through the spreadsheet, no.
Okay.
It was just, I wanted to give the background so that we had, shall we say, in our back pocket, at least we knew what the comparative prices and costs would be for fuel.
We did a comparison in 2010 of the city's, what the city paid, based on the information that I was sent, and then what we paid. And we found that for unleaded, we actually wouldn't save any substantial money on that. I believe in 2010, combined, we would have saved $156. Most of that relates to diesel. And then in 2010, we've actually spent less than, or would have saved by doing what we're doing, purchasing it at the Freedom Station. And I did verify that with Tom at the city to see if maybe I had some information that was, wasn't quite right. And he said, "No, it sounds like you have the right numbers." And so it, there's not going to be a huge savings. I don't know if it's something the board still wants to consider doing. It does have a great tracking system. The cards records who's there, how much they're fueling up. We would give up the car, the inexpensive car washes, but, and then they will offer us the 5 cents on the diesel also. So that's something that we hadn't had before.
Oh, they're still talking here. They'll give us the, not give, but they'll charge us 2.75 for the car wash, so, which is quite reasonable. So at this point, it's just for discussion. One of the things that Finance talked about was the convenience of having it right here, especially for the small vehicles that can literally go around the corner and tank up. So feel free to jump in here if you have anything that you'd like to share.
I would like just to add that if we're within a couple cents, Freedom does pay taxes in the village. Invest it in a new store. I don't, I would-
I think it was a great idea to dig into it, and we actually got 5 cents per gallon out of it.
That's right.
That's awesome.
And you see what it was before. It was two. So we're, hey.
It was a great exercise. It really was.
I can recall when the Freedom Company representatives came in here and were talking about the plans, and we noticed that there were no plans on there for diesel. And it was this board, in fact, that suggested, "Put in a diesel tank, put in a diesel pump. Guarantee you're gonna make it worth, it'll be worth your while." And so they did. So I feel that we were influential in getting that diesel capability in there for us. So, very good. And I would anticipate perhaps next month will be, we'll have it as a topic for-
Approval.
Approval? Okay, very good.
Well, and I guess if we're not changing, we really don't even need to approve it, in a sense, because we're just, they're offering the discount immediately. It's not like we're signing a contract.
Maybe we don't.
Yeah. I got thinking about it afterwards that we probably don't need to come back to the board. If we were going with the city, we might have to-
We read a letter saying they've already implemented it, basically.
Exactly.
Every once in a while, we, what do you call that, due diligence? Gloria, we have on here Item Number F, or Letter F here, 2012 Annual Village Budget, and I'm assuming that's this packet that you left in front of us? Is this what you want to talk about?
Yeah. Did you want to do the Excel?
Oh, geez. I checked off E without even, XL, I, I'm sorry. Item E, XL Energy Streetlight Payment Update. I happened to be at the, not this past North Hudson Car Show, the one that we just had on Saturday, but the one a couple of weeks before that. And I was talking to Swanee. You may remember that was the day it was raining, and the car show was virtually washed out. There was a gentleman there, his name was Bruce, and he had worked for NSP. And we were talking about the XL bill that at the last month's meeting, you approved us to go ahead and pay. Well, I got talking to Bruce about this, having been an NSP employee, and he said, he gave me the name of the CEO in Eau Claire, and said, "I suggest you give them a call. I'm sure you could negotiate that down." So I came back here to Village Hall, talked to Gloria about that. And Gloria has since arranged to have a meeting with herself, me, and some folks from NSP. And we're going to see if we can negotiate that $9100 bill down, hopefully at least in half. Anything you want to add to that? Do you have any questions? Okay. Thank you. Now we can go on to F. Is that all right? Do you want to talk about that packet of goodies?
Just letting everyone know that there, all the departments have submitted their projected year in, and this packet does have that information in there. There's blanks for the 2012 requested budget, and we need to get going on it. I like the fact that we're starting to take pieces of this budget and bring it forward gradually, instead of trying to do everything with one swoop of the budget. So if each month, we grab a piece of what we want to consider, or reduce, or increase, it'll be much easier in the end to approve that final budget.
I would ask each of the, each of you, as you sit in the meetings with your committees, to go through that, ask a lot of questions of your department chair or supervisor. Say, "Hey, explain this. Why do you need this? Do you really need this?" And so on. And see if we can get these numbers down even more than we did last year. And last year was, last year was a challenge also. All right. Any questions or comments on that? Public Works. Looks like Public Works is busy here.
Public Works is always busy. Couple of things to bring to your attention. We went out for bid proposals in several areas, crack filling, hot patching, some seal coating, and some striping, some crosswalk striping. We're prepared to recommend tonight two of those four proposals. They came in over budget, and at the last Public Works meeting, we had considerable discussion about what we can do and what we cannot do. It is the view of Public Works, and with the unanimous recommendation out of that committee, that we proceed with awarding the bid for crack filling and for the hot patching, those being a higher priority than the seal coating and the striping. We asked Public Works Director to investigate the quality of the paint that's used. Currently, we're using a paint that requires redoing crosswalks essentially on an annual basis, and we're concerned that perhaps we're being penny wise and dollar foolish. So we're investigating a higher quality of paint that would have a longer life cycle to it. It's more expensive, obviously, but we want to be able to make the evaluation on a long-term basis, which is the better way to go. We also had discussion concerning a couple of other subjects that likely are going to reoccur down the road as we get more data. There is considerable deterioration at an intersection at Cedar and Webster, and we are concerned about that deterioration, but we're not prepared yet to make a recommendation. We want to make sure, again, that we're looking at it, not just short-term, but long-term. And so Mark is getting some more data, which will be reviewed at Public Works. And we're also investigating the possibility and the likelihood of cleaning the sanitary sewer lift stations. But there, again, we're getting some additional information so that we make sure that we're looking at this project on a long-term basis and not just reacting to the fact that they need some cleaning. So with that, Mr. President, Public Works is prepared to make two recommendations for consideration of the board. The first one would be to move to recommend Farner Asphalt Sealers, crack fill the streets listed on the proposal at a cost not to exceed $15,815.
Second.
If there's a second, I'd like to make a comment.
Colleen's second.
This does come in over budget. It's approximately $3,815 over our anticipated budget. So the recommendation of Public Works is that that $3,815 be taken out of the budgeted amount for seal coating.
I understand that. What my concern is, as I read about the seal coating in your minutes, Ekblad indicated that all roads scheduled for seal coating this year could wait until next year, and which raised a question in, to me, here we are trying to save money in 2012 and squeeze the dollar as hard as we can. And I'm concerned about postponing that until, unless we have carryover.
There'll be about $9,000 that will not be spent out of that budget.
So we will be okay in-
Well, depends on how much seal coating we do.
Right.
We obviously can't do all four of these projects, is what we're indicating.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments? Want to start us off, Stan? Whoa, hang on a second.
This is just, put your mind at ease. This is what was budgeted, went over. This was what they're under, and this one's over. And then it's up being exactly the same.
It's amazing how that happens, isn't it?
Okay.
Well, this is not crack fill.
Hold that page. You still got that page? Okay. You want to just tell the whole board about that?
Basically, what Darrell was saying was that the budgeted amount is, adds up to $33,500. They've rearranged which categories it's going to come out of, and the end result for that category is $33,500. So it's, it's just, yeah.
All right. Stan?
Yes.
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 The second piece of those, of that four-legged stool that we're recommending is for the hot patching. This also came in over budget approximately $717 over budget. We're also recommending that that come out of the seal coating budget. Public Works is recommending, and I do move, to recommend Farner Asphalt Sealers hot patch and flex patch the streets listed on the attachment at a cost not to exceed $6,717.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Questions? We, Dan, you want to start us off?
Yes.
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 Um, do you have anything else, Dan?
Well, just in summary, then, this means that the bids that we did receive for the other two projects, the striping and for the seal coating, seal coating, we're recommending that we not do any seal coating in fiscal 2011, and there'll be some carryover on that. The street, the swiping, the crosswalk painting is still under evaluation, and it's likely that there will be a recommendation that something be done in that area, but until more specific information, including contact of the City of Hudson, who does have their own equipment, and seeing if it would be feasible to contract with them and for their personnel, we don't have a recommendation at this point.
Okay. Was there, do you know if there's any, you had crosswalk paintings. Zappa asked if the crosswalks need painting every year. And it got me to thinking, too, what happens if we just don't, if we skip a year? And if, over the course of the year, they get lighter and lighter? Is there any requirement that, or is it just a-
There are probably some public safety issues. I don't know that there is a mandate that you have to do it on some kind of regular basis, but that is what we discussed, and we discussed, why do we do it every year? The answer is because the paint that we use-
Washes up.
Wears out in a year.
Yeah.
There is a better paint, it's more expensive, so until we can look at that in a more global basis, we don't have a recommendation.
Okay.
Can I ask a-
Anything to add, Dan?
Which may be a dumb question.
Okay.
What are they doing to the manhole castings when it refers to hot patchy? Going around them?
I think that's what it means, yeah.
Normally, isn't that done-
I'm not a manhole expert.
Well, I just noticed that there was a couple of streets on here, like 10th. I was wondering, wasn't that just redone? Maybe it's a different section.
Separation. You got asphalt around steel, and over time, expansion, contraction, and you might get a gap in there.
Okay, thank you.
Keep water from getting under there and blowing it up.
I did have one other question. I had, under Supervisor's Report, it was just before adjournment. Ekblad noted that grease trap overflow at Mama Maria's caused the village public work staff to work some overtime hours last week. Do we recover that cost?
Yes.
Thank you.
No cost to the village on that issue?
Thank you. All right. Anything else?
That's it?
Okay. Public Safety.
All right. We met on June 9th, and although we do not need anything approved by the board at this time, do you want me to do this, Mark, to start off? Okay. Basically, the main issue that we're going to have coming up here is, at a point in the future, we're going to have to appoint an Emergency Management Director, due to the fact that the county is currently reducing its role in municipal emergencies to that of a support and resource role. And we will have to appoint somebody for this. Well, basically, the board is reviewing other municipalities' job descriptions, trying to come up with what is actually going to be entailed. We're working on this, and as we get a little bit more light shed on it and a better grasp of it, we'll come up with a recommendation. Other than that, we did finally take the bull by the horns, and we are listing on Craigslist, or will be listing on Craigslist, the metal building that we had acquired prior to the facility that we have now that we're not using. So we're going to put it out for a public bid with the hopes that we can get this thing, this pink elephant sold. And maybe it'll be a little shot in the arm for finances, a couple thousand or so dollars, you never know. And unless you have anything, Mark, I really don't have too much to cover.
Do you think?
Please.
These things came up after Finance, but one of the things that I want to bring attention, basically to the viewing public, is we've had a couple of issues recently, one with a lot of theft from vehicles. It's not been centralized to one particular area of the village, it's been all over the village. And the one common theme for all of the theft from vehicles that we have is that the vehicles were not locked. There were no forced entries within the last six months that we've had. It's all been vehicles where they've walked up, pulled on the door handle, and it's opened. They've been able to gain access. Some of them just rummage through, items moved around and thrown outside the car, vehicle doors left open, but a lot of items, small items, have been taken, GPS units, cell phones, money that's in the center console, those types of things. So I would urge our public in North Hudson to lock their doors, even if it's sitting in your driveway, because all of these occurred not just on the street, but also right up in the, next to your cozy little home in your driveway. So please- home in your driveway. So, please lock your doors, roll your windows up, and understand that we do have some crime in the village, and we're trying to locate those people. The other is, over the last about six to seven days, we've had a number of either attempts or theft of copper from locations. We had, Zappa Brothers had a theft of a large amount of copper from one of their buildings. Mama Maria's had their air conditioning unit basically destroyed as people were trying to capture the copper from inside that unit, and I just took a report today of a residence that was previously foreclosed, that the new owner was doing some work and realized that their air conditioning unit had been tampered with in an attempt to remove the copper tubing and wiring from that unit. So, I'm urging residents to keep their eyes open for any suspicious activity, and for people carrying objects that just seem awkward for them to be carrying. Call the dispatch center, either call 911, or the non-emergency 386-4701, and get an officer to go over and talk to that person. If it's legitimate, it's not a big problem, but when it's, when we've had a lot of thefts going on in town, if somebody's in an area where they shouldn't be, and you live in that area, you know it better than we do. If someone's in your neighborhood that you don't recognize, and probably think it's a wrong time of night for them to be there, we would like to go over and just find out what's going on and what their purpose is for being there. So, those two things came up since the last Public Safety meeting as kind of urgent matters. Thank you.
There's probably an opportunity to underscore the neighborhood watch kind of...
Absolutely.
Responsibility.
And we have, we have a neighborhood...
Watch program that's been in place. We have not had meetings in quite some time. The coordinator that we had had left town and gone to a different location, so that would be an opportunity, and I can send out an email to the previous list, and for those that are paying attention, but it would be a good idea for you to meet with your neighbors, get to know who they are, and have those discussions about the things that you see that are not quite right in your neighborhood. So, absolutely.
I'd like to add to the comment you made about the importance of locking your car. A lot of people don't even think about it, but most of the new cars have the buttons that you press the button inside your car, and your garage door opens, which then gives people already access to your home. They want to think about that the next time you don't lock your car. You've just given them the front door key. So, thank you for that. What occurred to me as I was looking over the minutes is, you had a quote on here, this position would be greater than $14,000, referring to the emergency management issue. I wondered if this, my comment that I scribbled here, so where's this $14,000 supposed to come from? And it got me wondering if there were, if we couldn't form some sort of a consortium with neighboring communities who have a similar need, and perhaps have a single individual, be able to write these plans and be the front person, or the point person for this position, and maybe save us all some money. Any reason why that wouldn't work, Mark? If we're going to be required to have this person, does this person need to be full-time here? And based on this price or this cost, I guess not.
Yeah, and I don't know. That cost was probably the top end of the information that we had, that had been given at the meeting, but it's up to the village board how they would like to designate that. The state statute says that the municipality must designate someone in that position, so whether that's a shared person between communities, there is no reference or no...
Okay. Seems to me that's something maybe Public Safety could take a look at and see if, we've got neighboring communities here that are close enough together, and they're all going to be requiring the same type of...
But in an emergency situation, wouldn't he be busy in his own community?
Exactly. That's the...
I mean, that's, you know, Siren just got whacked again, you know, and, you know, if it goes down that channel, and we, you know, if it's going in a path, say us, and, you know, Somerset, whatever type of thing, that might be an issue that we'd have. It's like, where's he gonna, where's he gonna do this?
I wouldn't, I don't disagree, but some of the requirements, what I've seen for this thing for a small community are quite burdensome. I mean, it's, if you could, if it was a coordinator and just fulfilled that position required by the mandate, it would seem to me you got some smaller communities like North Hudson, where you could get, hire just one person to do it.
Well, no, I haven't seen what the requirements are.
What'd it take you to get through that, Mark? I mean, how long have you been looking at that sort of thing and trying to get through it?
Quite some time.
Yeah. Several years. I mean, it's a lot of requirements in it. So, I mean, it might be a whole new career path for somebody.
All right. The other thing, Jim, you talked about the advertising, the Quonset Hut for sale on Craigslist for $4,000, their best offer. Do we have a right of refusal? If somebody comes in, I'll give you $100 for it. I'm sorry.
It's very complex how it's going to actually happen, because when somebody does put together an offer, we'll have to, first of all, make sure it's valid, and then they're going to have to wait until we get board approval. So, it's something that's not going to happen immediately, and they're going to have to be aware of that. So, yeah, and it's, let it be known that it's being sold as-is, so that we are not responsible.
Thank you.
And I think my esteemed colleague misspoke. It obviously is not a pink elephant. It's a wonderful, substantial building.
Oh, it is, huh? Oh, it is.
You could do a lot with a pink elephant.
And it's not pink at all. It's tan.
It's tan, yeah. Still as big as an elephant. Okay. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, public welfare.
It didn't meet.
Hmm?
We didn't meet.
It didn't.
Didn't meet, okay. Following that is the park board.
The main thing for us was, we pushed back the park dedication for Chief Janson Memorial Park to July 30th, Saturday, from 11 till 1, due to the fact that because of all the rain, Public Works hasn't been able to get everything in the park in place in time for the 16th.
Is that okay with the Jansons?
I have contacted her, but she hasn't replied yet.
So, we're not sure that June, July 30th will be acceptable either.
It actually might even work better for them, because two of the members are going to rush from another meeting on the 16th, so I'll contact her again.
Well, I have something to bring up that may be deemed sensitive, but I'm going to ask it anyway. On page two of the minutes from your June 13th meeting, under picnic tables, there's a recommendation to purchase six sets framed and so on, a cost of almost $1,100. And, let's see, this Pepperfest Committee is donating $1,500 for the purchase of additional picnic tables for Pepperfest Park. Okay. Wow, that's really generous of them. That's great. Then I look at the June 27th meeting minutes. Ekblad's picnic tables. It stated, "More picnic tables and benches are needed for Chief Janson Memorial Park." And so, there's a movement, motion here to buy more picnic tables. My question is, why can't we move them? Pepperfest uses these for a total of four days a year. Why can't these picnic tables? I was up at, looking at the, I've been up to the park recent, the Janson Memorial Park recently, a couple times, and the ones that are up there are not bolted down. Is there any reason we can't move picnic tables?
We had talked about that, and Mark Ekblad just had recommended that the picnic tables stay at Chief Janson Memorial Park.
I understand he made, I understand he said that, and I want to know why. Why can't we move them?
Could I add one thing with this? I think that's missing here, is, yes, you're right. Pepperfest donated the $1,500 and designated that it was for picnic tables. The picnic tables that he wants to purchase for Chief Janson Memorial Park would come from Derek's money that is designated for that park, and so, it would not, there would be no cost to the village either, for either of these purchases. And I do understand what you're saying, but if we have different festivities, like the city borrowing our picnic tables, and then something goes on up at the other park, we wouldn't have them there either.
Anybody have anything else? I would encourage you, even though we don't talk about remaining, Gloria and Becky put quite a bit of information at the back of, following your blue tab where it says "Other", and you'll notice that there are some items in there, Special Assessment for Interest on Outstanding Federal Loans, and then the Wisconsin Emerald Ash Borer Program. And then you'll see, we also include in there, for your edification, a license for the transient merchant known as Mike Thol, who sells sweet treats around the village on Thursdays. Anybody have anything else? Mr. Zap, is there anything you'd like to say? All in favor of Mark's motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. It is 8:05. That would be one hour and...